And you can come for your laptop at any time.
You don't have to, you don't have to like set a time with us or whatever.
I didn't wanna like leave you guys hanging. I'm very excited about it. I was like really silly in thinking that I could get there this morning.
Are you getting your laptop?
I'm getting a Surface Pro.
Oh.
Yeah.
Does that, does that come with the promotion?
I, all I did was ask. I was like my laptop's a dinosaur.
Yeah, I honestly.
I can't lug it around so.
What do you have now?
Sid testing one two, one two. Oh yeah, see the green light now. Okay, we're good.
Thank you.
No problem.
Do you want to turn this off for now?
Yep, just wanna turn back on.
Hey.
How's it going?
Sorry, Mr. Rowland.
I'm fine.
How was...
It was good.
I love those people.
Thanks. We should still go to community and be like, "We did it."
We did it, yeah.
We're regulating all this apparently, the mic is not familiar.
So, no problem. Just letting you know. But, um...
I did it. We slipped back into our good bits and enjoyed it. It is good. I find this like we just did like that.
Yeah, Josh, come in, hang out. I mean, yeah, just come in.
Yeah.
Okay. Isn't that just that I, you know, I need like an hour, you know, but... So, it's like a condensed two minutes.
Yeah.
You're right.
Yeah, and I had a ankle sprain.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, yeah, I never...
I have physical problems. And I think, like, thank you. Because I jump around.
Yeah, just about.
Yeah.
It's about two weeks.
You gotta tell the person.
I mean, the person.
She's getting higher levels than me on this stuff.
No, no. Everyone tells me.
If I'm in drugs here or something, I'd be like this. I'd be like this.
I love it. Do you see...
Exactly. I would do like the EMT curious type.
Don't you see if you're managing like, um, leads?
Yeah.
And the period.
Right. Oh, no. Right, 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 right. Yeah. Yeah. Too much. Too much. We should just like. Do you like in the isolation?
Maybe.
Jen, how are you? Crystal, how are you? Amanda? Alexa? Do we have? Uh, yes. Um.
Mara? Do we know if there's like Latino, MiG, this or anything?
You know, it's been.
In the room, but I don't.
Yeah, I mean, I have talked to you guys in Spanish, but I just.
See.
See.
Joe, I will. And much as.
Fernando's from the area.
Okay. I spoke to him. I spoke to him on camera. I was just having to try to do this here. Yeah. Porque es vocabulario. Porque es vocabulario, no es forte.
Well, here she is. I found us.
Okay. In case you didn't know, she has many. Yeah, like I.
How are you? Good, how are you? I'm zoning out.
I always stand over there. Yeah, I feel like I always stand up.
You just completely ignore what I said.
I said you see. She did. Then you said I always stand on this side. Can you go out that side?
No.
No, I said. But who, oh, they. Oh. Oh, yes. And she can't even. Okay. It's my side.
Yeah.
I don't think. But I.
I need one of these.
Oh, I'll give you one. I can get one.
Oh, that's cute. Can you get one for me so I can give it as a gift to Adrian? What? You know, it's the head of people.
That'd be good.
Yeah.
Great. I'm surprised he doesn't. He must have. He probably makes them. He has a whole thing happening out of the garden.
Yeah.
It's a workforce development program. You know, I keep trying to.
Hey, Josh.
Show me one. Give me the most difficult one.
I don't know. I don't understand. So it's not about.
I don't really need this.
You necessarily. Yeah, that's right. Yeah. Wow. She told you she should do it with a rap.
I hear it just sounded like.
It doesn't get you like that.
At least you're even trying. This is good. Oh, my God. I feel like stop the job. Bar el job. That sounds like a.
I know you see the video with thirty of the guys. They do the pronunciation.
Yes, yeah. That's it. I was talking to Ricardo from San Antonio. Or like about how regulate. Why is it the FAA? I don't know the word for it. We're not talking about where.
So autos.
Aero.
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 Aero. Oh, my God. No, it's. It's fast. It's fast.
Hello. Okay, bro. He just says to bed and. I was like, this is probably older than you. What's going on over here? We like it when you're here. How you doing? Good, good, good. All right. Good afternoon, everyone. Okay. I want to begin by addressing the disturbing reports of the Trump administration essentially kidnapping a Bronx teenager, Marwiel Gutierrez, and sending him to El Salvador, to which he has no connection, even after acknowledging that he wasn't the person they were looking for. His father is now left concerned about his son, who he and his lawyers have indicated has no criminal history and no gang affiliations or ties. I can tell you that as a mother and grandmother, I can only imagine the fear and anger his family is experiencing at this grave injustice. This is yet another example of the Trump administration's extreme agenda that disregards the U.S. Constitution's due process. The mayor claims that he supports due process and that his record on this is clear, but he hasn't said anything about this. And sadly, none of us should be surprised. His behavior this week as a subsidiary of the Trump administration showed his willingness to spread misinformation that even contradicts the Supreme Court multiple times. His actions this week seem to demonstrate that he really is fulfilling his bargain with Donald Trump. That is why the council is suing to stop the mayor and his administration from implementing an unlawful executive order to give Trump more power to carry out his extreme agenda in our city. The mayor once again stood with Tom Homan this week, the architect of the disastrous family separation policy. In doing so, it's clear that the mayor is holding up his end of the bargain by attempting to hand Rikers Island over to Donald Trump. But even more, their press conference undermined the claim of the necessity to have an office for ICE because they can clearly collaborate on criminal enforcement without it. The only logical conclusion is that the plan is to violate the law by enacting civil immigration enforcement if given the keys to Rikers. The mayor has placed his own personal interests ahead of the people of our city, and the same due process that he says he supports applies to most people on Rikers Island. Allowing ICE on Rikers would undermine the safety in our city. It would lead to more of the same constitutional violations that we're already seeing from the Trump administration against New Yorkers and people across this country. And when New Yorkers are afraid of cooperating with our city's own police and discouraged from reporting crime or seeking help, it makes everyone in our city less safe. The council will continue to stand firm to protect the rights and safety of all New Yorkers against the Trump administration, even if our mayor will not. Now we'll move on to our stated agenda. First, we'll vote on the following land use items. Brownsville NCP, an application by HPD to facilitate the development of deeply affordable housing on three parcels of vacant city-owned land in Councilmember Nurse and Councilmember Mealy's districts. Altogether, the three buildings will include seventy-five units with affordability ranging from thirty to seventy percent of the AMI. Next, we'll vote on the following finance items. Introduction 1234A, sponsored by Councilmember Justin Brannon, would require the Director of the Independent Budget Office to publish a report analyzing the mayor's executive budget for the ensuing fiscal year on May twentieth of each year, as opposed to May fifteenth. Additionally, this bill would move the council's public hearings on the mayor's executive budget to between May tenth and May thirty-first. Introduction 1219, sponsored by Deputy Speaker Diana Ayala, would establish the East Harlem One Hundred and Twenty-Fifth Street Business Improvement District. Resolution 327, sponsored by Councilmember Sandy Nurse, would call for passage of state legislation to authorize the city to offer retroactive tax exemptions. And pre-considered resolution, sponsored by Justin Brannon, Councilmember Justin Brannon, to approve new designation and charges to the, in the designation of certain organizations to receive funding in the expense budget. And next, we'll vote on the following home rule. SLR one would authorize the city to discontinue the use of certain designated park land within Flushing Meadows Corona Park and dedicate an amount equal to or greater than the fair market value towards acquiring new parklands and/or capital improvements of existing parklands with a minimum of twenty acres. This is conditional, based on approval and development of a gaming facility along with commercial, retail, entertainment, recreational, and community facility uses. Today, we'll also vote on the following pieces of legislation. Resolution 598, sponsored by Councilmember Carmen de La Rosa, would call on New York City healthcare institutions to contract with industrial laundry companies that respect workers' legal rights and adhere to area standards for wages and benefits. A pre-considered resolution, a pre-considered introduction, sponsored by Councilmember Lincoln Ressler, would amend the New York City Charter to account for numbering changes in a previous law and preserve the right of former public servants to communicate with city agencies or government offices as a part of an appearance in a legal proceeding in front of another agency, office, or court. Next, we'll vote on a pair of bills to combat deed theft and its predatory practices that stem from my 2024 State of the City. Introduction 889, sponsored by Councilmember Crystal Hudson, would require that the system maintained by the Department of Finance to provide notification to interested parties of the recording of certain real estate instruments to also notify the local council member when it affects a property that has been held by the same party for thirty years. Councilmember Hudson will speak later in the program. Introduction 1086A, sponsored by Councilmember Natasha Williams, would require the DOF to notify interested parties by email, text message, and postal mail when a deed or a mortgage-related document has been recorded for the property in thirty days or less. I invite Councilmember Williams to the podium to discuss her legislation.
Thank you and good afternoon. When a deed is recorded without a homeowner's knowledge, it is not just an oversight. It is a bureaucratic failure that can cost someone their home. Clouded titles, often the result of fraudulent filings or gaps in ownership records, disproportionately impact low-income families and communities of color. They block access to critical resources, including disaster recovery aid, and force families into legal battles they can't afford. Intro 1086 is a straightforward fix with powerful impact. It requires the Department of Finance to notify property owners within thirty days of any deed or mortgage-related filing by mail, and if they choose, by email or text. This is about taking a simple proactive step to prevent harm before it begins. Too many New Yorkers have found themselves blindsided, only learning of title fraud or forgery once their options are limited and their homes are at risk. This bill shifts the responsibility back to the city where it belongs, to notify and protect the people it serves. I am grateful to Brooklyn Legal Services Corporation A for bringing this issue to our attention and standing with us through every step of this process. Their legal team has worked with countless New Yorkers, homeowners who have faced foreclosure, legal limbo, and financial devastation because they weren't notified in time. This bill is rooted in their advocacy and in the lived experiences of the clients they fought to protect. Thank you, Speaker Adams, and my colleagues for backing this bill. Together, we are building a more transparent, accountable city, one that shows up for its residents before a crisis hits. Thank you.
Thank you.
Introduction 860A, sponsored by Councilmember Alexa Aviles, would require local development corporations to report annually on community hiring programs established to promote employment opportunities for residents living in low-income communities during the prior fiscal year. The report shall be posted on the New York City Economic Development Corporation's website. And Introduction 861A, also sponsored by Councilmember Aviles, would alter the terms of the contract between the city and EDC to require it to include details regarding agreements between developers and a nonprofit organization or person to provide community benefits as part of a development project. I invite Councilmember Aviles to the podium to discuss her legislation.
Thank you, Speaker. Good afternoon, everyone. The Economic Development Corporation, known as the EDC, is a nonprofit wannabe government agency that was set up to advance the city's economic development efforts. It has been notoriously opaque and operates with little accountability. For our community where EDC has a major footprint, this has been deeply problematic. Together, Intro 860 and 861 will strengthen community involvement and transparency in EDC's processes. We will now hold our city's leadership accountable to the lofty promises of jobs and provide information so that we can better negotiate on behalf of working people. Intro 860 will require that entities that contract with the EDC to publish an annual report on their community hiring. A common claim by the city is that their projects will benefit local residents because of the thousands of new job opportunities that will become available as a result. Of course, my constituents and New Yorkers are often very excited by the prospect since so many people struggle to find secure employment with, with a living wage. However, we have yet to see so many of these promises actually materialize, including in my district where thousands of jobs were promised through, let's say, the Made in New York project. The EDC has told our community over the years that they don't track the jobs. They manage properties and cannot mandate their tenants to report. As you can imagine, this is very dismaying to a community who was told and promised twenty thousand jobs if they accepted these economic development projects. So Intro 860 will change that by making it transparent, by making transparent key measurements around community hiring, including performance metrics for community hiring compared to the previous fiscal year, and a description of the efforts undertaken by the contracted entity to employ community members. Intro 861 will require EDC to disclose information related to a community benefits agreement, also known as CBAs, allowing our communities to see whether these agreements are empty promises or producing tangible benefits for impacted communities. In order to advance these projects and/or spin a project favorably to the press, EDC will often claim community benefits. Often, these agreements are carried out behind closed doors. And at times, we, excuse me, and at times between parties who don't have any sense of the needs of the communities. For example, EDC and the mayor's office engaged in a CBA with MSC cruises, agreeing to donate funds to seven Green Thumb Gardens. Not only were there no such gardens in the community that was directly impacted by this cruise, but no one in the community was ever engaged about benefits when, in fact, the project completely had negative impacts on the neighborhood. We've seen deep disparities also across community benefits in different neighborhoods, where some communities were able to actually negotiate benefits that actually helped local residents, and others, no such thing were happening. So there is a deep equity issue here as well. And so, all in all, these two bills will look at how we can make our economic development projects work for working people. And it will be, both of these bills will be critically important as we move forward to the site of the Brooklyn Marine Terminal, where EDC will continue to work with a task force of a site that is a hundred and twenty-two acres large. I want to thank all the advocates who worked with me in crafting this, this legislation, which comes directly from the experiences in our community. And among them, SBIDC, Jesse Solomon, Johnson, Tori of Community Board Seven, Greg Morris, Stephanie from, from New York City Employment Training Coalition, Evelyn Ortiz from Opportunities for a Better Tomorrow, and Andrea Beniola, and Justin Collins from Workforce Professionals. I want to thank Speaker Adams and Majority Leader Farias for helping us move this, move our city closer to transparency and real accountability for New Yorkers. Thank you.
Next, we will vote on legislation aimed at increasing the capacity of the city's stormwater system. Resolution 144A, sponsored by Councilmember Julie Menon, calls on the New York State Environmental Facilities Co-op Corporation to remove restrictive barriers and uncapped funds New York City can receive for water infrastructure upgrades. Resolution eight, sponsored by Councilmember Jen Gennaro, calls on the New York State Department of Health and New York State Environmental Facilities Corporation to fairly allocate grants and loans for lead service line replacement approved in the federal bipartisan infrastructure law and to remove all rules preventing New York City from receiving a fair share of this funding. Introduction 1150, also sponsored by Councilmember Gennaro, would require DEP to develop a plan to increase the capacity of the stormwater system to convey rainfall. Additionally, DEP would be required to display the status of the comprehensive stormwater plan in all recommended projects and policies recommended on an online dashboard. I invite Councilmember Gennaro to the. I invite Councilmember Gennaro to the podium to discuss his legislation.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Josh, I'm going to need a half hour. Just let me know when it's 25 minutes, okay? And I'll wrap up at that point. Now, before we get to 1150, there's kind of like groundwork that's been done before that. In 2008, I authored the city's first comprehensive stormwater management plan. That was a deal with a different issue, so-called combined sewer overflow, which is kind of like the big issue back then. You know, regular sewage combined with storm sewage and sanitary, that would go out and foul the waterways. That resulted in a real, you know, decrease in CSOs, and the way we did that was to do all the bioswales in the rain gardens and things that we see, and bioretention. And that helped. And had we not done that back then, we'd be in worse shape now regarding flooding. But the not-so-good thing about that is all of the green engineering that went into the last stormwater management plan, we've already done a lot of that stuff. And so now we have to kind of like resort to building sewers like the old-fashioned way, which gets us to, oh, and then, which gets us to 1150, almost, because Local Law 124, or 4 of 2024, that's when we passed the 10-year inland rainfall flood risk area map. The city's always done coastal flooding maps, but this is inland areas that are flooding from rainfall, what we call pluvial flooding. So that mapping is going to provide the target that DEP has to shoot at when, in terms of where we have to have more capacity. The current standard of rainwater capacity for sewer lines is 1.75 inches per hour. Once upon a time, that represented a five-year storm, and that, I think, is, was adequate in its day. But just two years ago, we had five, five-year storms in one year. So obviously, we have to do better. So 1150 calls upon DEP through this process, which the plan is going to be done in 10 years, but there are milestones every year between now and then. And I should have written this all down. You know, it's all, it's all up here. It's all up here. And so, so the idea is to target the hotspots first, to figure out how much capacity. So we're going to go from 1.75 to something higher than that, and that's going to depend upon how bad the area is in terms of what that number is going to be. Also complicating factor is that not all the cities are 1.75, parts of the city are at 1.5, parts of the city are 1.0 inches per hour, and parts of Southeast Queens, they have no, they have no capacity whatsoever. There are no storm sewers, and this bill speaks to that as well. So at the end of the day, we'll have the plan within 10 years, but then we have to build it out. City has more than 7,000 miles of sewer mains, so it's really going to take decades to do that. But the sooner we get going, you know, the sooner we can make it all happen. And notwithstanding the fact that we've already done a lot of green infrastructure, a lot of green engineering, we're going to do more. That's part of it. And so it's been great to work with DEP on this. They've been a great partner on this, and I like to thank the Speaker of the Council and all my colleagues who joined me in what I think will be a good and necessary bill for the city to keep us, you know, truly sustainable and to decrease the amount of flooding that we suffer with in a really, really bad way. That's it. Thank you. Josh, 25 minutes? Nothing? Okay, good. All right, fine.
Great job, and thank you for your diligence over, you know, the course of not just this council, but in previous years also. We really, really appreciate you.
Thank you. We'd like you, too.
Thank you. Next, we will vote on a package of legislation to regulate nonessential helicopter flights with the goal of mitigating noise pollution and its impacts on health and quality of life. During the past five years, there has been a 2,329% increase in noise complaints related to helicopters, as well as recent helicopter-related incidents. Earlier this month, we lost Shawn Johnson when the helicopter he was piloting crashed into the Hudson River, resulting in his death and the loss of a family of five. Resolution 233A, sponsored by Councilmember Gail Brewer, calls on the Federation Aviation Administration to ban all nonessential helicopter travel, including tourist and chartered helicopter flights over New York City. Resolution 226A, sponsored by Councilmember Gail Brewer, calls on the New York State Legislature to pass and the governor to sign A.6311, S.7381, which would prohibit certain nonessential flight operations at municipal helicopters and Hudson River Park. Resolution 85A, sponsored by Councilmember Gennaro, calls on the New York State Legislature to pass and the governor to sign A.5891, S.1140, which would establish a noise tax on nonessential helicopter and seaplane flights in cities with a population of 1 million or more. And Introduction 26A, sponsored by Majority Leader Amanda Farias, would prohibit helicopters that do not meet the most stringent FAA noise standards from operating for nonessential purposes out of the East 34th Street helport and the downtown Manhattan Wall Street helport beginning at the end of 2029. Additionally, the bill would require EDC to report on the percentage of flights at these two helports that do not currently meet the noise standards that will be enforced in 2029. I invite our Majority Leader to discuss her bill.
Thank you, Speaker.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Today, we are taking a major step toward a cleaner, quieter, and safer New York City with the passage of Introduction 26A. Legislation I proudly sponsor to phase out the noisiest and most outdated nonessential helicopter flights from city-owned teleports. This bill puts public safety, environmental justice, and innovation front and center. It directly responds to the tragic helicopter crash along the Hudson River that killed six people. While no legislation can eliminate all risk, transitioning to quieter, lower-emission aircraft will help reduce the dangers posed by the noisiest, most outdated helicopters. Introduction 26 prohibits helicopters that do not meet the FAA's most stringent noise standards, known as Stage 3, from operating nonessential flights out of the two city-run helports, East 34th Street and downtown Manhattan. These nonessential flights include sightseeing, luxury, and commuter services, not emergency response, law enforcement, or news gathering, which will remain exempt. This ban takes effect in late 2029, allowing time for the industry to adapt and for the city to update its contracts with helport operators. The requirement will be written into EDC's agreements with helport operators and enforced contractually. Additionally, EDC will begin reporting on the percentage of flights that don't meet the Stage 3 standards to ensure transparency in the years leading up to its full implementation. Why is this necessary? In 2023, over 59,311 complaints were filed specifically about helicopter noise, more than double the year before. The noise and emissions have real health impacts, from insomnia to high blood pressure to impaired cognitive function and long-term memory loss. And while the FAA governs airspace, the city has full authority over the use of its helports. We're using that authority responsibly to protect the health and quality of life of all New Yorkers. This is a measured, reasonable approach. Helicopter operations at these two city-run helports contribute an estimate of 78 million to the city's economy annually. Introduction 26A preserves essential services and industry activity while targeting the loudest, most disruptive flights. EDC estimates that the bill will affect approximately 9% of current flights operating from our two-run city helports. And again, I think this bill isn't anti-aviation. It's pro-safety, pro-innovation, pro-environmental justice. It aligns our infrastructure decisions with our climate goals and affirms that frontline communities deserve relief from unnecessary helicopter traffic. Lastly, I want to thank Speaker Adrian Adams, Councilmember Keith Powers, Gail Brewer, Jim Gennaro, and the Economic Development Corporation, of course, Stop the Chop New York, New Jersey, and all the advocates and community members who really helped shape this bill. And of course, thank you to all the impacted residents who have raised their voices to my committee and in my committee hearings for years. I've heard you, I've stood by you, and now this legislation is for you. Thank you.
Thank you. Finally, we will vote on several bills aiming to improve resources and ensure protections for transgender, gender nonconforming, and non-binary New Yorkers. These actions are even more critical, as the Trump administration continues to threaten the civil rights of trans and gender nonconforming people across the nation. Resolution 793, sponsored by Councilmember Lynn Schulman, calls on the New York State Legislature to pass and the governor to sign S.1633, A.2613, which would provide additional protections for the sensitive health information of patients, including information related to abortion or gender-affirming care. Introduction 781, also sponsored by Councilmember Schulman, would call on the New York State Legislature to introduce and pass, the governor to sign, legislation to prohibit out-of-state access to the New York State prescription monitoring programs, data for certain medications, including abortion medications, hormone therapy, and puberty blockers. Resolution 774, sponsored by Councilmember Hudson, calls on the New York State Department of Health to implement regulations requiring hospitals in New York City to adhere to the World Professional Association for Transgender Health Standards of Care 8, to ensure medical professionals can provide high-quality and ethical treatment for individuals with gender dysphoria. Resolution 771, sponsored by Councilmember Eric Botcher, calls on the New York State Governor to sign S.929, A.2141, which would extend protections over personal health information. Introduction 246A, sponsored by Councilmember Hudson, would require agencies that provide social services and collect demographic information through form documents from residents seeking services to update their forms where practicable, to include X as an option when gender identity information is collected. Now, I invite Councilmember Hudson to the podium to discuss her legislation.
What was that?
I love it.
Oh, thank you. Thank you. Good afternoon, and thank you so much, Madam Speaker. Today, this body is voting on three bills I've introduced. The first two, Intro 246 and Reso 774, are part of a larger package introduced by members of the LGBTQIA+ Caucus and Allies in the City Council, aimed at strengthening protections, excuse me, for transgender, gender nonconforming, non-binary, and intersex individuals across New York City. The federal government continues to make consistent and aggressive efforts to erode the rights of trans people. As a Black gay woman, I'm proud our body is backing up our expressed solidarity with meaningful, tangible action, something few legislatures across the nation are doing right now. The first bill, Intro 246, requires city agencies to include an X-gender option on certain forms and mandates annual reports to ensure demographic data collection is inclusive of sexual orientation, gender identity, and pronouns. We're also passing Resolution 774 that calls on the state to require New York City hospitals to follow the World Professional Association for Transgender Health Standards of Care 8, or SOC 8, ensuring providers can deliver high-quality, ethical care for trans patients, especially as gender-affirming care remains under attack nationwide. This legislative package is just one piece of this body's advocacy for trans New Yorkers. We'll continue to proactively work to protect our TGNC and B neighbors and push back against federal actions designed to disenfranchise some of our most vulnerable communities, because we know that justice for our most marginalized neighbors is justice for all New Yorkers. Lastly, I'll quickly touch on a third unrelated bill of mine we're set to pass that will help tackle deed theft. Introduction 889 will require the Department of Finance to notify the local council member whenever a deed-related or mortgage-related document is recorded that affects a property interest held by the same party for at least 30 years. This notification will allow us to proactively reach out to constituents, ensure their property transfers are legitimate, and connect them with the appropriate resources if fraud is detected. Deed theft remains a significant issue, particularly in districts like mine, which are experiencing rapid gentrification and are home to many longtime black and brown homeowners. Despite important progress in Albany to make deed theft a crime, there's still much work to be done to eliminate this problem once and for all. Thank you.
Introduction 1204A, sponsored by Councilmember Chi Ose, would require the city's Health Commissioner to conduct an assessment on health inequities affecting transgender, gender nonconforming, non-binary, and intersex individuals. DOHMH would be required to develop a health agenda to address these inequities. Introduction 1203A, also sponsored by Councilmember Ose, would require the Mayor's Office of Immigrant Affairs to conduct an assessment of the available resources and any service gaps in the city for newly arrived migrants who are transgender, gender nonconforming, non-binary, and intersex. Introduction 1201A, sponsored by Councilmember Shahana Hanif, would expand a person's private right of action for interference with reproductive or endocrine medical care to explicitly include all forms of gender-affirming care. The bill would take effect immediately. I invite Councilmember Hanif to the podium to discuss her legislation.
Thank you, Speaker Adams. I'm Councilmember Shahana Hanif, co-chair of the Progressive Caucus and the Task Force to Combat Hate. Today, the council will be voting on my bill, Intro 1201, the Affirm Act. I'd like to thank Brooklyn Borough President Reynoso and councilmembers Botcher, Rivera, Ose, Ressler, Hudson, and de La Rosa for introducing this bill with me, Women and Gender Equity Chair Lewis for moving it through the committee, and of course, Speaker Adams for including it on today's agenda. The Affirm Act will protect anyone who travels to New York City for gender-affirming care from being targeted by a lawsuit from anti-trans governments or entities by allowing patients to countersue. This bill will shield trans and gender nonconforming communities from retaliation against those who attempt to criminalize or punish their health care. Since the start of this year, there have been over 850 anti-trans bills introduced across the country, denying our communities' basic health care, education, legal recognition, and the right to publicly exist. The Affirm Act creates safe harbor protections for those who access, for those who access affirming care here in the Five Boroughs, and reaffirms our city's commitment to protection, dignity, and access for all who seek gender-affirming care right here in our city. I'm deeply proud that this council is stepping up to fight Donald Trump and his trans erasure agenda. I'd like to close by thanking the incredible coalition of issue experts and advocates who helped craft this bill and get the Affirm Act to this very point. My bill, alongside the other eight bills and resolutions in the Protect Trans Future package, sends a very clear message: trans and gender nonconforming people have rights here in New York City, no matter who is in the White House. Thank you.
And Introduction 1200A, sponsored by Councilmember Tiffany Caban, would require the Mayor's Office of Equity and Racial Justice to provide publicly available information on the legal rights and resources available to transgender, gender nonconforming, and non-binary individuals. This bill would also require the city to submit a report on the public information provided and engage in a media campaign regarding this public information. I invite Councilmember Caban to the podium to discuss her legislation.
Thank you. I am grateful to stand here with my colleagues, grateful to Speaker Adams, for your leadership and moral clarity. Local legislation and local government are the final line of defense against fascism. Today, with the passage of Intro 1200 and this bill package to protect trans futures, we are taking a step towards liberation and justice for our transgender, gender nonconforming, and intersex neighbors. Local government is the final line of defense against fascism, and Intro 1200 is designed to protect trans people in New York from the horrific incursions of the Trump administration. It requires New York City to communicate with trans New Yorkers about all of the rights and resources that they have. That's highlighting every resource, every fund, every program, and this bill is about transparency, accessibility, and solidarity. But most importantly, it's about survival, because we're not defending an ideology here, we are defending lives. The Trump administration's rollback of health care protections, the targeting of trans youth, and attempts to erase trans people from public life are reminders that our work is just beginning. New York City must continue to be a national leader, not just in resisting harm, but in actively advancing the rights and the safety of the trans community. We must validate trans and gender nonconforming existence at every level of government, and because we've got the federal government returning ripped-up passports and documents, it is left up to us. So thank you for all of the partnership and work on the entire Protect Trans Futures bills, and also just a quick thank you to my incredible staff, including Nomi Tinkelman, Jonah Birch, and Arden Levy, Dresner Levy.
Thank you. This concludes our stated agenda, and with that, we will take on topic questions on the bills we're voting on today.
Hi, I have a question about the helicopter noise bill. I think it's maybe a bit addressed, but I wanted to clarify that, I guess it's about 9% of flights currently operating out of the 9% of flights currently operating out of the two ports are not in compliance with those noise regulations, is that right?
That's right.
Okay, and then, do you have any indication if the mayor will or won't tend this to comply? Like he said after the more recent crash earlier this month, that he thinks the safety standards we have are good, and obviously, he's also resisted calls to do away with non-essential helicopter flights.
We would hope, as we do with all legislation passed by the City Council, that the mayor would agree with the legislation that is passed. This is good legislation. It comes forward from many, many advocates for many years in seeing that there has been a problem, and we believe that this legislation addresses that problem. Thank you.
Hi, I have a question too about helicopter or noisy bills. I guess, you know, we have stated critics who are saying, you know, these bills are more for show, they're lacking some loyalty, and that these changes should be coming from the best instead.
I would say the critics have not seen that the city of New York has a noise code and that we have the jurisdiction to regulate it. It is our responsibility as a local governing body to look at the 311 data, for example, the complaints that we're getting, and how to improve quality of life for New Yorkers. And when you're seeing in one year doubled complaints that are exceeding 59,000, the local elected officials and government have to figure out the way within its jurisdiction to do so, right? I think there are spaces and areas that are under FAA responsibility, like height of flights or airspace, and that's not what we're trying to, you know, over-impose our jurisdiction. We are looking at what we can control, and we are doing it well with this bill.
Any other on that? I'll call.
You all can stay, you can stay where?
Speaker, so when Tom Homan and the mayor were together earlier this week, Tony had said that constant immigration enforcement, if they can't get into Rikers, if they can't get into Rikers, then they're going to just send more immigration agents to the streets. So what's your reaction to that? And in addition, I have another question about your mayoral run and your leadership at the council. It's been reported that after several of your colleagues endorsed a pedo, that they were effectively punished, taken off of BNT. What do you say to your other colleagues who may endorse certain people of the race who now fear that they might get punished along the way because they haven't backed you? And what does that say about your leadership style of the city council?
Thank you for the questions. Courtney, I'll take the second one first. It was not several. There were two members that were taken off of BNT, and it was because I don't lead in a vacuum. The council's leadership quite frankly lost trust, and that's a critical thing for members of BNT to have. The positions are privileges, you know, they're not entitlements, and my job is to lead the body, and that's what guided those decisions. As far as Tom Homan is concerned, there was a lot there. I actually watched that press conference, and there was a whole lot that went on there. So one, ICE can already collaborate with the city if someone has been convicted of a serious crime, and that was made clear by the press conference itself. For me, that illustrated our point, that we don't have to change laws, we don't have to adjust anything. If there could be such a terrific collaboration between the federal government and the NYPD, then what are we talking about here? So, you know, if, if he's insinuating that he wants to pick up people leaving Rikers who don't qualify for that type of collaboration, then again, our point is being proven, because it would look like they plan to violate the law by doing civil immigration enforcement if given the keys to Rikers Island.
Sure, you guys are introducing the bills to protect trans and migrant New Yorkers, but I'm wondering what would be your reaction if, you know, outside hospitals or pharmacies would not cater to this population's care, which we already seen that happened when Trump threatened the public?
Yeah, I'm going to let Councilmember Hudson speak on that, but we would hope, once again, that any law that is passed by, by this council is abided by and complied with. So that would be our hope as far as consequences are concerned. We would have to cross that bridge when we come to it. Obviously, oversight is very important, and it's the work that we do collaboratively in this council to get the answers that we need to move forward. I don't know if you wanted to add anything else, or if you want to add anything?
Yeah, I'll also defer to Councilmember Caban, but we'll just start quickly by saying the law is the law, and so all healthcare providers are mandated by law to provide care to everybody. And so for any actors who decide not to do that, then they'll have to deal with the law as it stands.
Speaking of the law?
Yeah. You know, I, I'm not going to add too much, but it's, it's really simple, and it is the approach that we have also taken with our hospitals, that have decided that they are going to capitulate to the threats and the pressures from the Trump administration, a reminder that, you know, executive orders are not the law of the land, that we do have laws here at the city and state level, and that they demand the deliverance and compliance of providing care for transgender and gender nonconforming New Yorkers. And, you know, we're going to use our oversight functions, we will use our bully pulpit. I will stand here again today and say that there are private hospitals, for, as an example, who are doing the right thing, and there are private hospitals that are not, like NYU Langone, like Mount Sinai, that are still failing to provide gender-affirming care, and that extends to everything from therapies to medications as well. So it's something that we'll continue to track really, really closely and use every tool in our toolbox to provide healthcare. And I want to end by saying that every single major medical association in the United States of America has said unequivocally that it is critical to have access to gender-affirming care at all ages, not just over 18, all ages. And so we are going to follow that guidance of experts and make sure that we are protecting the healthcare of everybody who needs it.
Your last question about ICE, do you have any concern that if the council is not, or is successful in keeping ICE officers, that the city would be subject to, like, this kind of threat from Homan of sending more ICE officers to the city? I know the press conference also said something along the lines of letting officers onto Rikers is a way to keep them out of schools and churches. Do you take that to be an all-inclusive threat? And then, are you going to be in court tomorrow?
Oh, thank you for, for all of the questions. The, the, I guess the overarching answer to the first question is that we don't underestimate anything that the Trump administration will do. We have seen clearly across this whole nation that this is an administration that is in chaos, and they love to perpetuate chaos, whatever, whatever, where, whatever the case may be. New York has a target on its back, we can't deny that. And even though Donald Trump is a New Yorker, technically from New York, for whatever reason, he chooses to continue to have this city as a main target. We don't know what's around the next corner, so I'm not even going to surmise to, you know, to even deal with that, but we have to stay vigilant and expect anything when it comes to this chaotic administration. And of course, we see that our mayor is a willing partner with this administration as well, so we have to be prepared for anything. As far as being in court tomorrow, I am going to try to be there. We do have plans around the judge and around the case itself, so I'm going to hope to be there, but I'm not sure. Ethan?
Just a question on like campaign. Yesterday, Zoran Mavdani is going to put TV out this evening, and, you know, I know your campaign is not all about matching the votes yet. I guess, do you have any levers to get on TV before the next dispersment at the end of May?
Thank you for the question. I wish I could answer it the way that I want to, but we are here in the red room, and I can't do that kind of thing here. So our plans are ongoing as far as any kind of publicity, media, and all of that. We have a great team that is handling everything, and our schedule is still not complete, I'll put it that way. So when and if we do, we'll let you know. Yeah?
Thank you, everybody.
Thanks, everyone.
I always feel bad leaving you.